For the record, we have a motion to recommend approval of the special use permit as advertised and presented with conditions. The conditions are as follows. Condition number one, the hospitality rooms shall be operated and managed by the White Houston. Number two, Ridge 249 LLC shall provide accessible off-street parking. Third, Ridge 249 LLC shall apply and obtain a new special use permit should it want to expand or modify the property beyond the two guest hospitality rooms as proposed in this S U P application. Condition four, Ridge 249 LLC and/or the White Houston shall discourage on-street parking through the property. And condition five, Ridge 249 LLC shall provide a site plan showing such features as setbacks, building footprint, and the already built structure and site improvements such as parking, access to Main Street, and any accessibility requirements to the zoning administrator to confirm compliance with the S U P and will appropriate governing codes prior to the issuance of the building permit. An as-built site plan shall be provided to the zoning administrator or administrative group prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit. I don't think the applicants here.
Oh, Mr. Trump.
I'm sorry, I called it. Do you understand those conditions?
I do, I read them.
Okay, okay, you're welcome. So then we can go on motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion's approved, thank you. And that is all we have on our agenda, so I would ask for a motion to close the planning commission.
Move to close.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You all through service. Sorry, I'm waiting for the other. All right, we move back to the town council board of the agenda. I would like to make one addition under new business. This will be out in that if I had to enter into closing as well by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1 to discuss case personnel matters specifically dealing with 2.2 of the town council. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So that'll be our last thing tonight. Okay. Let's see, we have a minutes. Gene. Thank you, as always.
I'll move to approve the minutes. Ed Rippon. George.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are adopted. The mayor's report tonight won. The committee that puts on our great Christmas in Little Washington every year is looking for some new folks, so I'm going to send out your ask garbage and I'm going to the county list looking for volunteers to help out. This will be the twentieth year that we held the parade in Little Washington. COVID time there. I would also point out that going into 2026 is both the 250th anniversary of the country and the 230th anniversary of Little Washington. So I hope that we have several town folks who volunteer for the Christmas parade. Because I'm going to try to avail them to also consider putting on a Fourth of July parade in the town. We officially have none, but Fourth of July, pointing to my state's falls on the Fourth of July itself. I've talked to Colonel Bouchois, he's willing to break his rules and actually do the concert on the Fourth, so hoping that the town will put a strong showing of volunteers and volunteers pull off something for that. That was two big events in one year, scratch a while ago, six months. I hope everyone will support that. After an incredibly long wait for the slow grind of the Commonwealth bureaucracy and the understandable amount of time it takes to have signs made, the speed limits in town will be coming down this weekend soon. I did a brief look at the weather and that the public works department, I myself and my dog make their rounds in the new signs. So we'll look forward to that. May 22nd is the deadline coming up for folks who wish to submit an offer for the town property that's available for summer or all of that lot. We will submit those proposals at our meeting. I wanted to, you know, we were supposed to have two other items on the agenda tonight. I just wanted to apologize both to the planning commission and to the applicants that we, turns out we had some deficiency in the advertisements that were done for those. We're taking corrective action and we should be able to pick that back up in June. It's hopefully another one. I think that concludes my remarks. I will say, as some of you know and have read, we did receive a letter from a member of the board supervisors this afternoon. I do not intend to particularly address the inputs of that letter. I will ask later in our session that we can add that into the record. I will ask me and him to consent at that time. So without bothering the public agree. But we'll discuss that as we come to it. It's part of a bunch of discussion later. concludes the mayor's report.
Thank you. We got just the monthly expenses, the fact here to look at and next month we look at. Thank you to Dave, which will show you how probably we will end the year. And don't worry, driver to spend everything that I think we might have. So it says gross profit, that only means that's what the book shoots out. If you want something, she totally got it, so. Everything that says profit, you are to spend.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. That this coming?
No, it's Sarah and Andrew. What are these people called?
They're right. Thank you.
Right.
Yes, I talked to the legal director today, the general. I met with them last week, so they're preparing drawings to submit to the council permit. I don't know why it takes so long to do that, to have that. As soon as that permit is approved, they'll notify me so I'm aware of it. So we also see any problems or issues, we'll push them forward. I'm now working on the work plan for upgrading the conveyor in Phase 2 of the water treatment plant. As soon as I get that and circulate everybody's approval, we'll schedule the dates and we'll take that next day.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple things to report on tonight. One is the current landfill you mentioned that's going to be on the agenda in June. I do plan to be there in person for that and us are available to talk around with the term as they come out. With the lay-up, laying and road making agreement, I'm expecting to revise and draft for the tunnels, but I haven't seen an internal review by the council at this point. And I've been working with Barbara about the raising of water sewer system and that it will need to be advertised for June. That's my report.
Thank you, Martin, appreciate it. All right, then you have Mr. Gack. Any other comments on the planning commission? Thank you, ma'am. And then we also have a list from the ARB. I think we're ready to move on to old business. This is the public hearing for the FYI 26 budget. I will now open that public hearing and welcome comments from the public. You're not paid staff, but I'm. If you know no public comments, I would close the public hearing. Barbara, do you need to take a minute?
No, that's okay.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is a water connection request for 7th Avenue and 11th Avenue. Any comments you'd like to add?
Right, did I miss when we had the town council planning, a public hearing on the S U P amendment? Was that, I thought it was just the planning commission that had all that public hearing. You didn't know that the public hearing was closed, is that correct?
Yeah, it was opening and closing the one budget. I have the comments. We're going to do that in a couple lineups. A little further down the agenda, just taking care of the some easier things. So we have a, we have an application for two water connections. Any questions for the council?
Yeah, he's already agreed on it.
Yep.
Any other questions I can explain?
In that case, I entertain a motion to approve those additional connections to the system.
Is that moved?
Start. All right. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
How am I? Thanks, you are approved. Congratulations. All right, vote participation policy. You guys have a copy in there soon. All right, at this point, I will, I will open the town council's public hearing on special use permit for 249 Main Street. Any comments from the applicant board?
One thing that we're excited to get started, it's long overdue. We're anxious to get this building very hard and we can work more after this. We had a good meeting with the ARB, fully approved it. I think you've all seen the application and the plans and we look forward to answering any questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions for the public? In that case, I will close the public hearing. We can proceed immediately to approval, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so I would entertain a motion to approve the sub-1 million use permit for 249 Main Street.
Hi, so a little bit excited.
I have a second.
All same.
Everyone in favor, please indicate by saying aye. I will do the role call this time.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Aye.
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 Aye. Looking forward to seeing the work. What's that? Enjoy it. Yeah. All right, now we have participation policy. This is re-adaptation, which I understand may need handling of our policy for a while, but no changes to it. For a while, it's for technical, but they might continue. Any questions? All right, in that case, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'm all in.
Thank you. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is adopted. Water supply plan resolution.
This came through the Rep. and Rep. Regional Commission. The state is requiring the development of regional water supply plans throughout the Commonwealth, and they have a June 1 deadline for having a resolution from municipalities and county governments to endorse and participate in the planning process. The planning process will be done by the Rep. and Regional Commission. They will go ahead and do all of the work that needs to be done. They are going to be seeking grants to go ahead and pay for the work that they have to do. It's basically, we just have to endorse the work that is being mandated of us to have this plan. They will do the work for us.
That's right.
So all it is, is just, we have to have a formal resolution that we are endorsing this process. So I will make a motion to endorse the local or regional water supply planning and application for this year '25 water supply plan.
All same.
Any discussion? Everybody in favor, present, give us a aye.
Aye.
Barbara, we have an item for the. Yep, yeah, so I apologize with one other item that accidentally dropped off here that we should have included. That's the lot line adjustment. Or two lots that are, this was in your original packet. Two lots that are owned by the Little Washington. I would say, as this was brought up by the chair of the planning commission, but not for tonight, I think. Maybe we should consider, we might consider this for administrative approval in the future. When it is the lot line between the property owners who own both lots. And yet, that's another part of this in the future. For tonight, we have to, we'll have to consider it formally, so. Any comments about that? Pretty scary work, yeah. Any questions from the council?
Please consider to be refused from the discussion.
Noted. All right, thank you. In that case, I entertain a motion to approve this lot line adjustment.
Is that moved?
Same. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All right.
Aye.
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 All these with the agenda there.
It's not the labels of this particularly, but recall when we're doing our comprehensive plan, all the topics came up and said, in town, there's a handful of parcels where parcel lines cross. Did we ever make a resolution of what we're going to use? Mr. Gack, so somebody to correct those?
We did.
It wasn't a lot, I think there's a big five, five locations where.
It's a street issue. Thing where the text, the text line, I think.
Yeah, we just need to correct those.
Yes.
Probably need to properly change our zone.
All's it, I feel like it's. Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to get a little clue of it. Very easy when things like this, I don't really focus on crossing too many.
Well, I think we have to deal with it as part of the reform of the ordinance on this.
Yeah.
That would also mean that going forward, we could just deal with that, clean those up administratively.
Yeah.
They have to be, you know, a joint, you know, the same reason.
Good idea.
Okay. Next up, the presentation from our third team. We'd like to make sure we have standards in here. Exactly. We have a question. Yeah. It's, it's, it's so well placed. Yeah.
It's just too gritty.
We've got some work to do a bit down this side.
Need one of the ones that you need one in your box? Nope.
It's a sun job, actually.
I said earlier, we have whole, whole pass of companies out there.
So. This is a scale model from the other. If you want to look at it closely, you'll see the difference in gradations along. Some sense of the size of every building involved in the project. And trees are ridiculous. But everybody on the team here tonight can answer any question you may have and all that. Steve, let's go start this. Our company will answer any question you want.
Steve, before you start, I think this is the first time you've been at councils since the opportunity we had to publicly review the completed apartments on our identification. And I just want to say publicly, you and your team have done a fabulous job on Phase 1.
Thank you.
It's a great addition to the town.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate that.
You have taken that as we think there are 10 children in Phase 1.
Fantastic.
Ten children.
I just think there were at least five.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
That was fun.
Would be good for the Fourth of July for me.
That's right.
Thanks, Mr. Brown, and thank you Chuck for the introduction. It's been a very exciting year for us at Rush River Commons. Annexation is complete and Phase 2 is now part of the town. We're very excited about that. Phase 1 is complete and as Chuck said, we, out of our 18 residential units, 16 are occupied and we've got commitments for the last two, so we'll be full occupancy. And about 40 residents and 10 children, which is very exciting. And you tell by the town hall, bicycles and everybody is very important.
Careful when you're driving on the tow stop.
Yes.
It's out there now, but we're not used to.
Food pantry has been nothing right now and our operations have been pretty successful. They've added about another 100 people. So patron was serving the community, which was very exciting. Office building is working out very well, excellent services. The only thing we have at least is our little retail space, so we've got some good leads on that. We're very excited about that. Stream restoration underway. Clearing is done, all the invases are out. We put the stream devices are all installed now. You can actually see a cinema screen now running through the property. So the bridges that we're going to build, they start in June. And then this fall, it's our planting and then our drought system. So it should be buttoned up, you know, before the end of the year and that will finish too. So we've been able to do it without, without everybody here, the citizens, the council, ARB, the staff, and everybody working together. It's been very exciting and very, very positive and we're very grateful for y'all's help. So going back to 2021, when we first started with y'all, we presented a vision for the whole campus. This was an exhibit that we had back in the spring of 2021. We had Phase 1, the stream, and some representations by Duncan and Walker to do for Phase 2. And the camp, it's a campus to us and it's always been planned and been uniformed in an integrated way. And connect pedestrian connections from one phase to the other, but always focused on kind of the green parts. Our stream course has been a great part of the project and we're, we're very excited about that. And when we, back in 21, you know, we shared with you our, our goal for the whole campus. I don't want to read it, but it's a nice statement that Chuck came up with. To create a place of common ground for the residents of the town of Washington and Rehman County and to make a positive and lasting contribution to the community. And for me, it's been a hard work on the project and I think, you know, thank Chuck and his family for the commitment and the vision to make this happen. And I think job one has been accomplished with what we've done so far. So excited to talk about Phase 2. You know, when we did the concepts for Phase 2, before we started, Chuck did an extensive listening tour with the community. We talked everywhere and we did over a series of months and we took seriously all the input from the residents, what they desire, what their expectations were for the project. And Duncan and Steve helped us incorporate this into the design, not only the site design, but also architecture and yield of the project. So the concept plan that we're showing you tonight, and which is the model, doesn't deviate really from our original concept. There's some buying points that, that changed a little bit, but it's still a couple buildings on the side of the stream. It's still an integrated plan. One thing that we have changed, based on the grading of the layout of the project, we've taken out, again, the theater concept. We still have a small greeting gathering area to be over in this part of the site, but we've got a small one management facility. But that's one small element that we took out. We still have a proposed community center and a proposed office building function. Drop this down, Duncan. And we shared some conceptual elevations for buildings with the planning commission back in October of last year. And Duncan and his team have been refining them, so these are kind of the latest updates for them. And Duncan, maybe I'm going to find a spot, a few, two minutes to maybe walk through these. Yeah, these two buildings really are two structures. One contains the community center, kind of breakout lobby area, small administrative wing. And that's indicated on, on these boards. And then the second building is a two-story office building, which is represented, it's in main operations or represented here. You can see them both indicated also on the model, on the site plan. And one of the things that we heard was that it was really a desire to create new buildings, but buildings that looked as if they might have been in a long time, you know. And so in looking around at some of the presidents agricultural structures and settings, we've developed a design, the community center, it kind of, kind of looks like a house and barn, right? As a grouping of structures that we see often in Rehman County. The, the form of the barn lends itself really nicely to the community hall. So it'll be one large room that can accommodate gatherings of community in different seating configurations, theater style, banquet style, you know, informal gatherings within this large, large structure. Administrative support spaces and small meeting rooms within the adjacent administrative wing. And then in the, in the adjacent office buildings, we have two levels of office space. We're kind of broken down the scale to try to make it closer to a residential sort of scale. And as you can see in the model and in the drawings, we have to put in an elevator to provide access to the second floor. And we probably could find to put it inside the side, so. Further that idea of a sort of an agricultural style group of buildings. We've got kind of the house, the barn, the outdoor, the asylum. And we really think that they'll come together in a, in a, a nice way, create a nice grouping of buildings and really create a very, a very nice collection of outdoor spaces around them that can be used as gathering spaces for different kinds of functions for the community. That's the main intent of what we're showing here.
I want to point out that Duncan and his firm Gensler. I want to point out that Duncan and his firm Gensler go on to design an asset for Phase One development. All of which, I mean, everybody I've talked to thinks it's been a wonderful, wonderful juxtaposition of the Shakespeare Building and so on, and same group. Thank you, Duncan.
Thanks, Chuck. I wanted to go over a couple of little things on the site plan and the model. The model is too scattered. I had the opportunity to go into Duncan's office, and he met the model maker, and it's, it's very precise. These are the size. Sizes are accurate, the buildings are accurate. It's pretty cool to see the 3D printer printing the buildings. So it's neat, and it really helps you get a reveal for the contours that we're dealing with out there and the site plan and some plans. So just a couple of things to point out in the site plan. We're continuing our principles from Phase One. When we started the project, Chuck was very insistent on respect the environment, do the right thing, but grading layout, no impacts to wetlands, and, you know, respect the context for what we're doing. We continue that. The bridges that are going across the creek, the pedestrian, no vehicles. It's the green part, we're not going to lot like that. We're looking, we heard a comment about the amount of parking. So we're studying right now an option to make some of the parking spaces what we call green parking spaces. We're working on that to see if we can make that a reality. That will help us with heat pain, it will help us with impervious cover, and it'll just make the site look green. Since it's a community center, you don't always have to have a lot of parking for the daily use, but whenever the events, it's nice to have that parking there, and it's all very accessible to the. One main entrance to the site is lined up by Old Mill, met with beat outs in December, I believe. And we went forth and back from, you know, locations for the, the entrance, and they recommended lining it up at Old Mill and the North Key intersection. The site is since course, we'll have a boulevard entry coming up to the site. We're still going to continue with our green design, we're going to have geothermal for HAC. The community center will have solar, we'll have that. We don't have solar on the office building because of the orientation, but the solar and the geothermal are working really great in Phase One and some in Phase Two. Talked about green space, all our utilities, like Phase One, will be underground. Site lighting will be same as we did Phase One, the darkest kind of compliant. And we look forward to working with Redman, leading environmental protection again, and we're trying to work with Lanes Group, we'll be interacting with that when we get into the final design process. Last thing, and I won't belabor it too long, but one of the things that we've also focused on is we're at a key location in the town, where the front door, very important spot. So we're very sensitive to what the project's going to look like, from both Lee High and Warren. We've done engineered cross-sections, I have them, and we've got your business, it's been a long evening. We can show them, bring them to other events, but know that we have analyzed that. And there's existing tree cover outside of our property, and the V dot right of way that's going to remain. And then when we designed our site plan, there's some significant trees inside our property line, near the V dot property line, the fence out there, but I hadn't seen it until I walked it this past winter, walked into it. For preserving all those trees, we've moved our parking lots in, so we don't have to grade there. Those are reserved now. And then it also gives us enough opportunity with green space that if we have any gaps, we can fill it in with our greens and get those to grow and build. And our role is to be invisible as much as we can from all sides of the site, from Warren and from Highland. So a lot of the variety, we're excited, we'll be coming in, I'll be next month, with our applications for the reselling process on this. Happy to answer any questions, and thank you Duncan, and thank you Chuck. We look forward to working with y'all on this next phase of the project.
Steve, I have two questions. One, can you go a little bit more detail? I had an opportunity earlier to hear, and I think what you're doing in the green space is really powerful, and I would love a little bit more detail. That's the longer question. The shorter question is, is it possible perhaps for the town to be able to put a sign near the intersection of Warren and Route, and Road Route 211?
So the V dot, answer the second question first, because that's easier and it's more technical. The V dot right of way here comes like this, comes like this, and it goes back to about here. It's because this is a limited access highway, so they always have a bigger right of way at the intersection. So there might be a little bit of room here to get a sign in. We'd love to work with y'all and see if we can incorporate that. Anything you know to get our right of way is required permit from them. So when we did Phase One, we did some planting in front of the office building. Got a permit from them to do that. We'll do the same thing when we work on this part, because it's a little thin on the trees here. But we'd be happy to work with you and see if there's a way, a way we can do a comprehensive planting and perhaps signage, you know, or our power of the town lots and market.
That would be a good sound up.
We'd love to do that. Second question, green spaces. So parking here, you know, roads, green bumper, parking buildings. This is the main entrance to the community center.
What I was talking about is the poll reclamation that you're doing at the stream.
Oh, the stream, okay. This is, yeah, this is the stream core here. And then adjacent to that, we've got a green space here, and then this is our store on water management. The background on the stream restoration is, with streams over time, sometimes they will get in size. They'll erode vertically, and you'll see, if you go out and see streams, you see very sharp stream banks. The bad part about that is the wetlands that are adjacent to it, it choked off the water. They thrive when they have frequent water, and then keeps the soil wet. But if it's in size, when you have the lower intensities, more frequent, low intensity storms, the water doesn't get next to it. So then the invases come in. And you can see how many invases we have pulled out. All material is gone, some invasive stuff. We saved everything that was natural and native. So we've actually rerouted the upper reach of the stream where the incisions worked. And in the lower parts, it's not as bad. But that work's been completed, stabilized, and then the spa will come back in and plant the areas that were cleared with invases.
Do you have some burnout pools?
They're not burnout pools per se, but they're, we've put some mainstream devices that they act as little swimming pools. I have a different definition of that.
I'm sorry, you have a better system.
Yeah. But it does create standing water, which creates some habitat diversity. And again, helps keep the wetlands wet and, 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 and. And we'll have a trail system that we'll put into them all also. There'll be some soft trails, some street curbs, perhaps. But I think one of the really nice aspects of the stream valley, you can see it in the model as well, is that there's a couple of places where we have these bridges, pedestrian bridges that cross. And they're really constructed like a boardwalk, so it's very sort of natural wood, sort of this. Again, but in the model as well. So it'll almost be like you can cross from Phase One to Phase Two. At this point, these are all fully accessible. This is, this is all going to be ramping at a less than five percent slope. And then there's some steps that lead up to the community center, there's also a ramp that's going to go around, so every part of the site is fully accessible. And then there's a second walk on this side. So you'll almost be able to do sort of a nature loop that connects Phase One and Phase Two around the trail system within the stream valley. So it's really something that, you know, the work is having an important impact environmentally, but it's also going to be something that people will be able to get out and walk around and be able to see and appreciate.
Also, we should, we can integrate with the town.
Exactly, it's a town.
Yes. Steve talked about what we started to do at very beginning. From the very beginning, we said we wanted to make an asset for the weather, which we've done. And then on top of that, we placed a two-acre construction on the property two years ago. So it's not only the weather, that's, that's there for the, for the, for the, for the path. Right now, we have the fact that we've rerouted this new stream bed. You go down there this afternoon, you'll see there's water, almost full level of ground. Center, center down for a.
Our, our stream, the open space in Phase One, and which includes the stream core of the water, is in conservation, it's in easement with Land Trust of Virginia. I had it wrapped out about two weeks ago, and she was thrilled. And when we finish Phase Two, as part of the Phase Two, we'll expand that easement to get the buffer on both sides of the stream core. Couldn't do it in the first phase, because that was on the county line, going past the county line. Now that it's gone, you know, we can ramp it up and make it, make it logical. So that'll be very exciting, and there, there will be pressures to work with on that.
When you mentioned the, like, the pathway, the lower one there, you have a bridge to be boardwalked. So is that only the hard surface or some military mound?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
We've got a company called Nature Bridges, they're out of Florida, but that's all they do is, is bridge work. And it's ADA, and it's all wood construction, and we, we fund for, for wood chair friends.
Are bicycles, are they considered vehicles or pedestrians?
Good question. Um, maybe that, oh, yeah.
We've got ten kids in town.
They will set their little stories. Probably a little blood Connie's, uh, eight, nine, or something.
Maybe a little bit of tricycles.
We're like, what is, she estimated on the two structures, it looks like the office building.
This building is probably the same size as Phase One office building.
Okay.
This is around about eight thousand square feet, about four thousand square feet each level.
Okay.
And then this is, uh, this is slightly larger, it's about ten thousand square feet. Community center, a lobby space. I did mention that, you know, the lobby has a, a bit of a drop off. So again, people that maybe, you know, have a limited mobility can be dropped right out of the front door. And the lobby, it's a through lobby with, you know, glass walls on both sides. So even at the point where you first enter, you'll immediately have a view out, and the street that will be on. And we're, we're looking at having, you know, doors and off the walls so that, you know, on the weather street, you can kind of open this up and create a really nice patio area out here that kind of, you know, flows in and out of the lobby space for, for events that might take place there. So I think it's, really the goal was to try to create buildings that really integrate well with the landscape and provide that, that sort of immediate connection between indoor and outdoor spaces for people to enjoy.
We've got torches all along the back of the community center, because it's facing south.
Yeah, this is.
For the solar gain, and also create, like I was saying, an indoor-outdoor connection.
This will be a really nice porch, I think, in the community hall. We'll be able to walk out through doors and, and, you know, before or after event gather on the porch out here, over the, within the lawn and the stream valley beyond, and all the way back into the, through the trees to the Phase One building. So I think it'll be a really nice way, at the end of a community event or reunion, to be able to step outside and enjoy the natural environment.
I think we just sort of blanked here, but reminding that sort of really drawn the office building and the food pantry in Phase One.
Uh, office and building Phase One is, is close, I think, to nine and change.
Yeah.
And the food pantry, I believe it's forty-five hundred. It looks bigger than the.
Near the flat.
But the foot, the footprints are forty-five hundred.
Understanding that you've got, go through all the hooves, hopefully not all hooves, since it's a plan they're developing, but do you anticipate when you're going to break ground on this? And do you have even the faintest notion of what is the completion date that you do here?
That seems a lot.
Yeah, I do, I do. So do I do work.
Yeah, I do. Well, you know, it's like, like Phase One, we're going to work closely with the staff and planning permission and y'all. Hopefully, we learn a bunch of stuff on Phase One, and it won't take us long to go through entitlements, but, you know, in a perfect world, a few months of entitlements. And one of the things that we're going to do with this project is post-Phase One. Phase One, we did the entitlements, and then we brought in our engineered site plan. This time, what we're going to do, and we talked with Mr. Garrison about it last year, is we'll do the entitlements and get that started, but then very shortly, a few weeks after we do that, we'll bring in the site plan for Phase Two, the engineered site plan. So then there won't be a disconnect between, here's a concept, what does that mean? What are we getting at the end of the day? You'll have both of them at the same time for you, it's like, whizzing, we're going to see what you're going to get. So as we go through the process, and we're aware that, you know, we're, we're taking a little risk of having the community make some revisions, but that's a kind of. And when we did Phase One, we had some good, good improvements through the process, so we're not afraid of that. But we're in a hurry to like, get this in the ground. If you ask me, I'd love to push some dirt this year. I'd like to get this thing all wrapped up, you know, like twenty-six, early twenty-seven, so I can retire.
I've got a more aggressive. Say I have a more aggressive timetable than you do.
Always.
One thing that we will have to wrap away with is, you know, we, we were trying to get through the background adjustment. We hustled through a new zone, a new commercial zone. This is going to take some revising of that in a thoughtful way, so that'll be a more aggressive process.
Or should we go?
I think we all agree that, you know, we did that, right, first time, we've discussed.
Do you want to, Steve, can you expose that to the people?
That is fun.
Before we go into the, into the closed session, one scales. I will, I'll end over there for a couple of minutes, and I have a couple of words to say before we go into the closed session. So any, any additional comments we could probably do?
On anything?
On anything, Scott?
Yeah, there's, there's so much wonderful stuff happening in town. But something that's happened, seems to be unmentioned. I would like to thank Patrick and Ian for taking down three or four, three telephone poles, and all wires and cables, and all that shit that's up there. For years, everybody says, can we really get that stuff there? And this expense, it's hard to do. And Patrick, many people have forgotten, took down a good three or four poles, and a couple of wires. In the center town, when we did the, the vacation, and he's just done the same on one block, Main Street. Most people notice, but I'm not sure everybody does. It's kind of thing, you walk along, it says, oh, it's better here, you can entry, why is it, you know, it's all light. And this is, of course, a sales pitch, when, when Patrick moved ahead with the, with the spa, how about next block of the, of the major. I'm sure he probably thinking of, maybe doing something like that again, although we don't have the commission, so. But I just want to thank him, so if somebody's, um, noticed that, or if it's unmentioned.
Well, at that point, I had asked for his team to, to give us a, a ROM for finishing this. Well, at that point, I had asked his team to, to give us a, a ROM for finishing this project on, on Main Street. So it'll eventually eliminate all power lines and telephone lines on Main, if we can afford it. And it really just comes down to us being able to forebump a lot of the hands for most of the rest of it. So, we get back to us, we consider that a little curvy asylum. I think it may well be an investment worth making in this home. And they, they manage some of the synergies of scale that you're doing.
I have to think of Project Manager Michael Binder, who's here in the term of, or having had the patience go through all of the hoops necessary. But it is a subtle improvement. The more we do, the more Andrew for the whole town. And we'll, and we'll.
Thank you. Any other questions from the doctor, or comments from the public?
What would you need to look forward to bringing all the air around?
I'm going to try to. Me too. Um, okay, I, I, with that, I'll, I'll close the, of form. Again, speaking of recording things, did want to spend a little, I don't particularly want to do it, but I think I have to do it. Just to comment on a letter that was received by the town, myself, late today, for the board supervisors. And as I said earlier, I ended that, ended the record, I'm not going to bother to read it, it's available to the public, if the public wants to read it in their spare time. But the gratuitous nature of it, you know, I, I've been in politics in big Washington for better than 25 years at this point. And I have a hard time thinking of another example, better example of the politics of distraction. The only thing this letter is intended to do is distract folks from the fact that Board Supervisors is up the street tonight raising their taxes. And they're raising their taxes due to poor planning by the county for the last decade. And the conundrum of some of that poor planning is the person who wrote this letter. Both encouraging the board supervisors to lower taxes a few years ago, not thinking ahead to the implications of that. And then spending two years preventing this council from allowing further development of retro work, which would also substantially add to the tax base of the county. So it is just pretty unbelievable to me that on the eve of a discussion about taxes in the county, a member of that board, whom I won't mention by name, would choose to send such a gratuitous letter to the town system that we are not going to be able to ensure Rattan County has a sound financial future. This, this particular council has worked very hard over the last almost eight years to ensure that we are very solid footing in the town. And we can continue to support residents in the county by both, you know, beautifying town, property product values in the town, and ensuring that we allow the upper and lower community because we are taking care of our water and sewer system, making all those sort of long-term plans that are required to ensure we have a healthy community. It also loses the fact that we have lower taxes here in town. Well, that's true. And it is absolutely a competitive, uh, advantage to the town. And if some of his constituents operate businesses outside the town who don't like the county's tax rates, we'll encourage them to come on over. We'll be happy to happen. I'm going to stop there. I don't think we bear to further comment. I personally have no intention of replying to this letter and don't think that the council has any need to consider it further. With that, I think we're going to move into the closed session. So thank you all for joining us tonight.